Okay, I now call this meeting of the Sacramento Housing Authority and City Council Meeting to order at 2:04 PM. Madam City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Thank you. Councilmember Kaplan.
Here.
Councilmember Tao.
Here.
Mayor Protem Talamantes.
Here.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Here.
Vice Mayor Maple.
Here.
Councilmember Guerra.
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings.
Here.
And we expect Councilmember Vang and Mayor Steinberg momentarily.
Excellent, thank you so much. Councilmember Valenzuela, would you mind leading us in the Land Acknowledgement and Pledge of Allegiance?
It would be my pleasure. Please rise if you are able for the opening acknowledgements in honor of Sacramento's indigenous people and tribal lands. To the original people of this land, the Nisanan people, the Southern Maidu, Valley and Plains Miwok, Putwin-Wintune peoples, and the people of the Wilton Rancheria, Sacramento's only federally-recognized tribe. May we acknowledge and honor the native people who came before us and still walk beside us today on these ancestral lands by choosing to gather today in the act of practice of acknowledgement and appreciation for Sacramento's indigenous peoples' history, contributions, and lives. Thank you. Now please salute and pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, we will now take up the consent calendar. Do I have any members that would like to comment or pull items for a separate vote or discussion? Seeing Councilmember Guerra.
I'll move Consent Calendar Vice Mayor, and I'll save my comments for Item 10 since they're interrelated.
Okay, I have a motion.
I will second.
I have a motion and a second. Do we have any public comment?
I have no public comments on the consent calendar.
All right, so will you please, or all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? No's? All right, that passes unanimously. All right, moving on to our discussion calendar, item number 10. Do we have a presentation from staff? Welcome.
Good afternoon, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Whitney Hinton, Program Manager at SHRA. Staff is requesting approval of the final loan documents for the San Juan Apartments and Mutual Housing Community. You previously approved a loan commitment in February of last year. In addition to the final loan documents approvals, we are here to provide an update on the changes to the original funding sources. Last year, the City of Sacramento was awarded $2.5 million in the first allocation of pro housing funds. Staff is recommending approval of these funds to the project, allowing SHRA to free up the housing trust funds previously committed. San Juan Apartments is a new construction multifamily workforce family project located at the corner of Stockton Boulevard and Young Street. It will be 113 units that consist of ones, twos, and three bedrooms, ranging from 30% to 60% of area median income. Mutual Housing California is the developer, property manager, and residence service provider. SHRA has owned this land for many years and are excited that construction will start next month. In closing, staff is requesting approval of the pro housing funds and approval of the final loan documents for San Juan's apartments. And staff is available to answer any questions you may have.
So much. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
I have no public comment on item 10.
All right, so moving on to comments.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. First, I want to just thank the SHRA staff and the team over at Mutual Housing California for their consistent commitment and dedication to this area. So for this new council, this is an area that was the old San Juan Motel and the also San Juan RV Mobile Home Park. And unfortunately, it became one of those really blighted areas, and it was caught up in the middle between the county, the city, and then when redevelopment went away, it turned into a RASA property. And so that challenge with those three properties to do anything was a real issue. Fortunately, you know, I was able to sponsor a bill that Senator Pan carried, SP 481. When we were celebrating over at New Pleasant Grove Baptist Church on Lemon Hill and Power Inn, and we realized like, you know, we've got to figure out a solution, how to fix this area. That led to an effort, you know, that consistently pushed to try to figure out how to create a unique amenity for Stockton Boulevard. I want to thank, you know, Stephanie Francis and the Fruit Ridge Manor community, Stockton Boulevard folks, for consistently pushing on this because it was actually one of the first projects to really focus on if we bring density to the Boulevard on an area where we have good transit and there's a grocery store nearby where there's close to schools, then we can create a community amenity for folks. But this wouldn't happen if we didn't take the proactive action that we voted on right now also in the consent calendar to be a pro housing designation city. And the first one at that, so the active efforts of the City Council to be a pro housing city has actually made this project move forward. And without that, we probably would have an empty lot that continued to be a blighted area with illegal dumping, you know, unfortunate fires and other issues that happened in those properties. But with that, Madam Vice Mayor, I'm excited to move the item and thank everyone's commitment to this. I'm hopeful, you know, again, this effort started in 2015 when I met with the Fruit Ridge Manor community, and I'm hoping that we can get this off the ground and make sure that we move some affordable housing, 100 units, you know, affordable housing forward. With that, thank you, Madam Vice Mayor.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, and a really important project. So I see Councilmember Jennings.
Yes, Vice Mayor, I just want everybody in the audience, as well as us as colleagues, to see the enthusiasm and the effort that the gentleman who gave credit to everybody else, and gave no credit to himself, the work that he's put into making this happen. This is a project that's significant for the Boulevard. It's a project that's significant for the City of Sacramento, and Councilmember Guerra has done yeoman's work in making it all come about. You know, he talked about the 113 units, he talked about SHRA and Mutual Housing Network coming together along with others. He talked about bringing density to the Boulevard and making sure the transportation and food and everything came together. And what he didn't talk about was his effort in making all that happen. So his experience as a council member, the amount of years that he's done this and continued to do this work to make his district better should not go unnoticed. And so I just want to acknowledge him, and I want to second his motion.
Excellent. So we have a motion and a second, and no truer words have been said. I know a lot of times that people don't recognize how much work and time goes into basically anything that we do in government, from local government all the way up, but just the amount of dedication it takes to go and get a fix at the state level and to work on that, that can sometimes take years in and of itself, and then to then follow it through all the way down is really incredible. So commend you on that. Do we have other comments from councilmembers? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. I'm going to do a voice vote here if everybody's okay with that. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any no's, abstentions? All right, that passes unanimously. Congratulations, and thank you. Woo-hoo. Finally, finally. All right, moving on to item number 11, I have our Housing Choice Voucher Program Funding Update. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Mary Liz Paulson, and I'm Director of the Housing Choice Voucher Program, and I want to give you an update today on the Housing Choice Voucher Program, or HCV. So as you know, the voucher program is a very large, very complex program where families pay a portion of their income towards rent, and then the Housing Authority with funds from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development had paid the difference between what the family can pay and what the landlord is asking for. We look at our data points throughout the month. Many times, we're looking at trends, we're looking at costs, we're looking at how families are doing as they're looking for a place to rent. As recently as our meeting with HUD in December, HUD was telling us to continue to lease up, continue to move forward, that as is normally the case, when we continue to lease up, HUD will continue to give funding for that, to make that happen. We had a meeting with, or we had a notification from HUD in February saying, well, you need to look at what you're doing because it looks like we have more families that are being housed, that if the trends continue, if we continue to add more families and lease up more families, we won't have enough funding to support those families that are already receiving assistance. And our goal really is to provide assistance to those families that currently have it, who now have stabilized housing, and so we were looking at what we could do so that we could continue to work and live within our budget. Now, this is a change within the way that the program has managed, or has been managed. This was not a surprise to us, as I said. We continue to track and to look at how our program is working and how families are leasing up, how they are finding units, the cost of that, and so on. So as we look forward, we came to the same conclusion as HUD. How we get there and what happens in between is a little bit different, but we were looking and reevaluating our lease-up efforts. We would always look at how many families are leaving the program. As we continue to have many families that are in the process of leasing up or families exiting, we have families that are moving, so what we pay in rental assistance may stop and start. It's not a status quo at all. So we're looking at the cost of the program, and our costs are continuing to increase. Now, we're seeing that this is a national issue, but it's especially pronounced here in the state of California. But our fair market rents, and these are determined by HUD, and this is the basis for how we determine the amount of rental assistance that we provide. But the fair market rents increased 55% between 2020 and 2024. On a monthly basis, we pay out to landlords in this community between $15 million and $16 million a month, and that continues to go up. In Sacramento, we're projecting that those dollars will continue to increase. To what extent is really unknown, and so we'll continue to monitor that. We are seeing where rents are starting to level off, and in some cases, in some of the zip codes within Sacramento, they're actually starting to go down. And so if you've looked at our website or talked with a family that is receiving Housing Choice Voucher benefits, you will know that the rent is determined based on zip codes. So it's not universally going up everywhere, but again, it is changing, and there are different trends. So we'll look at what's in the future. Now, when I say that, that's kind of a really big question because within Sacramento, within our Housing Authority, our fiscal year is a calendar year, January through December. HUD approved, or I'm sorry, Congress approved the federal budget on March 9th. So they have, when they approve the budget, they approve the funds for HUD, and then HUD has 60 days from then to tell housing authorities throughout the country what their budget is for 2024. So here we are in May, and we still don't have a budget at this point. We don't know how much money will be coming to us directly from HUD. So we're waiting for that information, but we can't not move and not make decisions, so we are moving forward with the information that we have. So as we are moving forward and looking at our options, we are taking some actions. For example, oh, this is, so for example, one of the things that we are doing is we gave notice to all of the families that have a voucher. And so for families that have a voucher, we are letting them know that the voucher will have a new deadline, a new expiration date. So let me explain. When families are moving, they have 120 days initially to lease up. Then they can ask for an extension, and we give extensions in increments of 60 days. So when families ask for an extension, we are letting them know now that they will get a last and final extension, and that is good for 60 days. Now, this is going back to our pre-pandemic policy. During the pandemic, we were really trying to keep people housed, and so we were issuing extensions after extensions in our efforts to keep families housed. Now we have a concern about funding, and we are limiting that. So we are giving everybody notice as they are asking for extensions, they have one last and final opportunity. So we began messaging that to our voucher holders beginning in mid-March and letting them know that they needed to use this voucher, find a unit right away. So we sent out letters to all of our families that have vouchers, and again, we're encouraging families to lease up right away. So we put information on our website with resources and information about how to use the voucher, how to find a unit. We're using more and more recordings so that we can get information out to folks. YouTube is the way of the world right now, so we're right on board trying to give those, that information at same venue. We're referring folks to affordablehousing.com, which is where they can find landlords who are advertising where they have vacant units available. So the next thing we did is we started working with those project-based voucher contracts. Now, there's two kinds of vouchers. We talk about tenant-based vouchers, and that's what you typically think of, where a family has a voucher and they can go out in the community and they can find a unit where they want to rent, and the assistance, the voucher goes with them. We call that tenant-based vouchers, and that's what we're talking about limiting the extension for. We also have project-based vouchers, and these are units where the assistance is tied to that unit. When the family moves, they leave that assistance behind. We have several contracts throughout the community, many of those you've approved in past meetings, such as I know you're involved in Capital Park Hotel that has project-based vouchers, and other of our Home Key Projects, for example. So we are limiting the ability of the site to add additional vouchers, additional project-based vouchers to that site. So we have a commitment, we'll continue to fill the units as they turn over when families move out, but we are not adding any additional units. So we've communicated that to our partners. We are stopping to issue vouchers. We're not processing applications anymore. We are, there are some exceptions to that, actually, as HUD has notified us, where we have received some referrals for the VASH program, for example, and FYI, and these programs are described here above. So we do take referrals for the VASH program from the Veterans Affairs Department. We still have some vouchers available, they're not fully leased, and HUD said that that was an exception. We can continue to use those to lease up. The Foster Youth Initiative is a new program, so it was fairly recently funded, so with that in mind, HUD also said that we could continue to lease those up. This is for youth aged 18 to 24 who are either have already aged out of foster care or are soon to age out, and they are either homeless or imminently homeless. Shelter Plus Care is a program that is funded by a different branch of HUD. It's not really a voucher program, but it provides housing and supportive services to those that are most in need of housing and need the additional help to be able to live independently. So families who have project-based vouchers can move if they request a tenant-based voucher. If a tenant-based voucher is available, then they can request a tenant-based voucher and move, and assistance continues. Right now, we don't have tenant-based vouchers available, so we're letting our families who have project-based vouchers to know that this is a good time to stay in place, preserve the housing that they have, and we will continue to support that. Again, our commitment to the project-based vouchers remains. So we notified all of the voucher holders that were living in project-based voucher units and let them know that, why they were not able to move with a tenant-based voucher. We'll continue to take notice of all of the changes that happen in our program. We are looking at data points multiple times during the month. We are looking to assess how our trends are continuing, what are the costs. As we continue to make, as we continue to review that, we will make changes and adapt as necessary. There's information in our administrative plan, which is on our website. But Congress approves our budget on an annual basis, so we're getting through, and this discussion is really about how we get through 2024. 2025 is a new year with a new budget. So as we're making changes and really looking at working throughout and within our budget, we are communicating with all of our stakeholders throughout the community, and you'll see we have lots of folks who are involved and interested in the Housing Choice Voucher Program. So just to recap, some of the changes in March, we issued our last and final voucher extension notice, saying that they actually had a deadline to utilize the voucher. In April, we stopped absorbing vouchers that come in from other communities, from other jurisdictions. We'll still allow families to move here, but they're not taking one of our vouchers. And we worked with the project-based voucher sites that I mentioned and the tenants, as I've mentioned. So we began communicating with our program participants. We sent emails and letters. We had meetings where we did webinars so that folks, wherever they were, would be able to tap in and check on the status of their situation, ask questions. We were working with our tenants also about moving, so if they lived in our project-based units, then we were communicating that and were open to answering questions, and really worked with the project-based voucher sites and the managers there as well to help get the message out. We had several meetings with our community partners. We talked at the Continuum of Care meeting on April 10th. We sent letters and emails out to our various community partners, especially those service, social service providers. Again, we had Zoom meetings so that folks could tap in wherever they were and join us and get more information about what we were doing and why. So there was some understanding so that they could communicate that to the folks that they served. And as I mentioned, we work with our project-based voucher sites where there are social services as well as the developers, the property managers there, and then hosted a meeting for them on May 1st. So in conclusion, we have a budget that we need to work within. We can't continue to expand the program. Our focus really is on keeping families housed, following HUD's direction. We're meeting with them every month. They're asking for updated information, and we will continue to monitor the program and make whatever changes are necessary as a result. And that's the end of my presentation. I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Do we have public testimony?
I have no public comments on this item.
Okay, let's turn it over to the members. I know I have some comments and questions, but I'll first go to Vice Mayor Maple.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the presentation. I know this is a, this is a very difficult time for everyone, and I know it's, you know, it's certainly not the fault of the organization or any of the staff because, you know, you can't control what happens at the federal level, and that's just one of the, this is how it goes when you have a program like this that's funded almost entirely, if not entirely federally funded. So, but, you know, I just, I have more comments. I might have a couple of questions, too. Just, it's a huge, it's a huge punch in the gut, especially for, you know, a lot of the community members that I represent, because, you know, they're very reliant on these, and then especially as we think about homelessness and our need to get folks into housing that they can afford. This is a huge challenge, so I hope all of us can maybe put some pressure on our federal partners to make sure that this continues forward into the next year and gets the funding that it needs that really matches up with the rents. You know, this is one of the, while there's a lot of benefits to having a voucher-based system like this, instead of, for example, building a bunch of, you know, public housing, one of the challenges is that it's very much relying upon the market. And so when you have this extreme increases in rent that we've seen over the last several years, there's really no controlling for that. I mean, there's just a huge delta between what people are making, what they can afford to pay, and what the price of the units are, and there's only so much money in the pot. So I just appreciate the background. I thought it was very well, well put in your presentation and very easy for me to digest. For, for the vouchers that exist, I know there's the, there's an additional six months, right, that people have. One of the challenges that I've heard from some folks, there's challenges around actually getting landlords to participate in the program. We know that. We've heard that from other presentations, and I know that you're working on efforts to recruit more, which is wonderful. But one of the other challenges that I've heard about, and I would love if this is, is that the inspection process can sometimes take a long time. So for example, I've heard a few stories from constituents of mine where, you know, they found a unit that they liked, they've got the voucher lined up, they've got the landlord, and then they're waiting, you know, sometimes weeks or months to get an inspection before they can actually go into the unit, and by that time, the landlord has moved on, and then they're back trying to find a place again. And I just wanted to ask about that. Is there, you know, a long waiting period for inspections, or is that something that is kind of rare?
Yeah. So let me explain a little bit about what happens when, when the paperwork comes into our office. First of all, we've launched a new program in October where people can submit what we call a RIFTA. It's really the marriage document that brings the tenant and the prospective landlord together. So people can now do that online, so that's really helping a lot. So we're not delaying the time based on the mail delivery. So when it is submitted online, we're seeing that right away. Now, because there are federal dollars involved, it's not the same as when you go look at a unit and you make a decision right then and you're able to lease up. But there are several protections that are in place that really protect the tenant as they're looking for a unit. So we want to make sure, for example, that we are entering into a contract with a landlord who really is the owner of record, and so we will verify that. We need to make sure that the rent amount is affordable to the family and that it is what we call is reasonable or comparable. And so there's several things that we do in the process, and all of that depends on, for us, it depends on whether we have all of the information at hand. So if a landlord is not putting in or including information showing that he or she is the landlord of record, then that causes delays while we're getting that so that we can verify and move forward. So there's information that we're collecting, and then we're gathering as well. So we have streamlined, we've made it as quick as, as we can, given all of the federal regulations. So there is a wait, and so that part is true. How long it is really depends on whether we have the information from the tenant, from the landlord. If the, if we don't have sufficient information, well, let me explain. For the rent reasonable, so the rents right now are changing, as we just talked about. There, some areas are increasing, some are staying the same, some are decreasing. We have a database. We contract with a third party to help us in determining that the rent is comparable, so we're not artificially inflating the rent in that community, making it inaccessible to folks who are normally looking also to rent in the area. So if we don't have information that justifies the amount of rent the landlord is asking for, the landlord has the option of helping us collect additional data to justify, to show that this really is comparable to other units in the area. And so if that's the situation, and that's more the situation right now because, again, the rents are changing and it's not uniform across all of the region, then it may be delayed while the landlord is pulling that data to submit to us so that we can approve, and once we can verify that it is reasonable and comparable.
Okay. That's actually really helpful. I didn't realize a lot of that, but it makes sense, so you have a lot of the federal regulations and guidelines that you have to go by, and we know what that's like.
Right.
So, but I appreciate that you've done everything you can to streamline the process because I'm not sure, I'm not sure if you keep data on this or not, but it is a story I've heard more than once. You know, again, you know, people, I'm assuming what they're telling me is true, but that, you know, that there has been a delta between the time that they find a place and then the inspection, and they've actually lost an opportunity to go into an apartment. So I don't know if we, if you track any data on that, but that'd be really interesting to know.
We do, and I'll also tell you, I was working with a landlord last week, and we were waiting because the landlord took time before they were ready to submit the RIFTA. So, and I don't know what the landlord on their side is doing. They're doing their own background check and so on as well. So there are delays that the tenant may not know at what point there is a delay in getting the information to us. So there's all sorts of things that are all happening at the same time, but all of it has to be completed before we can go forward.
Okay, that is really helpful. Thank you so much. And then, those are my comments for now. I may have more questions later. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Kaplan.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Vice Mayor. You took a couple of questions that I had, so I too want to echo and hear a follow-up on the RIFTA that has been brought to my attention. And I know we talk about streamlining, and I know there's layers with the federal government, but also what is, what are we doing to reach out to help clients and those that have vouchers to make sure they filled out that document? Because many may, the digital divide, we are dealing with that there may be, you know, they've got their phone as their device, and, you know, they don't have all of that information. So I'm curious in the follow-up on that of the time, what does it, what does streamlining really look like, and where are the delays? But also specifically helping clients to come in that may not have the computers.
Good, good, thank you. So, so we still have the paperwork. So, so we still have the paper available. So, people have multiple ways. It's their choice as to how to submit it. I was just looking last week, I think, and 70% of the RIFTAs that come in are coming in electronically, but it's not 100%. So, families still, if they choose, they still have the option of submitting the paper, the paper documentation. It's harder when people submit the documentation on paper to confirm, one, that the writing is legible, and two, that everything is completed and signatures are provided where they're needed. On the electronic document, we don't have any issues about legibility. And so, there are parts of the application or the RIFTA, and by the way, RIFTA stands for Request for Tenancy Approval, RFTA. So, when people submit the RIFTA online, there are required fields that they can't move forward if they don't submit it. And so, they can do, so that's to answer your question. So, we are working to make sure that the documentation is getting submitted. We've also tested it, and you can do it on the phone. So, you don't have to have access to a computer. If you have a smartphone that has access to the internet, then that is sufficient as well.
And, and thank you for that. Then I guess it goes the next step of reaching out to the 30% and how can you help them digitize everything, because that's, that's where it's going. I appreciate your presentation, although I do have to say, I'm really disappointed. Went online to read the report. The report is two pages. It doesn't have anything you've just presented to council, and to me, that is a lack of transparency. We know that you've had to basically stay and no more referrals since April, but for me, when we talk about transparency in the public, the public deserves the opportunity to pop open this and get the same information beforehand so that those who want to provide comment can provide comment. That is not in the report nowadays, right now. And so, I'd like to see when reports come forward in the future, if there is a presentation, that should be connected to the report so that the public gets the full picture, because otherwise, it looks like we're hiding things. And, and I know that's not your intent, but there is a perception that we should and can do better, because I'm pretty sure you didn't just finish the report today.
So, so let me also say that we are planning to give this presentation in two parts. I do appreciate your comments and your suggestions, and we will take that. The next time that we report back to you will be on June 11th, and at that time, we will have our budget, and we will have a report to you that says what we plan to do. At this point, we were moving very quickly with the information, and so we were giving you just an update at this point and would follow up with a more involved staff report once we have the budget so that we can fully notify you of all of what is happening with some numbers as well.
But I think also, you know, I hear you. I just happen to disagree in that this presentation should have been in the report, because the community and those that have vouchers should have the opportunity to see that. I should be able to see that, do more research, but it also helps me, if I have questions, to then reach out to you beforehand, to do my due diligence. So, if I don't have, so if I have the report and it answers my questions, great. But if I don't, then I'm surprising you on the dais, because I am now having a whole bunch of questions that was based off of that information. And I don't want to surprise you, and I think the public deserves the opportunity to come speak or send in ecomments based off of, of what they read, because what's important to me is what you put in that document. Somebody wants to look at this a year from now, alls they're pulling up is a two-page. That doesn't say anything that you just said, and, and that transparency is, is really important. Separately, have we advocated to our federal partners, as we know everything is last minute? Have we talked to Matsui and Bera to try and get more funding and move this along?
So, at this point, we're still waiting for the budget to come through, and typically what happens when the budget is announced, which should be any day now, and I'm saying that because Congress approved the national budget on March 9th, and there's 60 days. So, we were led to believe that that might have happened yesterday. Today's the 7th, but by tomorrow is really the deadline when we should have a budget. We should know what we are receiving. At the same time HUD makes that announcement, typically, they provide funds to cover a shortfall, and we are working with our HUD partners right now, and that is part of the things that they are advocating. One of the responses that they are advocating that we do as well, and of course, we will apply for additional funding. So, we will be able to work more when we know exactly what that number is and as we move forward.
Have we had pre-conversations with Congresswoman Matsui and Congressman Bera's office about our concerns with the housing voucher program in Sacramento needing more money?
At this point, I have not.
So, if I could respond to that, yes, we have had many conversations directly with HUD as well as our congressional representatives through our national organizations, so the Council of Large Public Housing Authorities, that represents all of the large housing authorities throughout the state. We just had a convening just a couple of weeks ago. I think that was just before the mayor had an opportunity to be there as well, where we are constantly always pushing for more funding for vouchers and more importantly, for California, because this is a huge issue within California. And also, working through our Council, our California Association of Housing Authorities, we're there, and we're specifically saying how much we need vouchers in an effort to address homelessness. And I know Mayor Bass has been very, very proactive and was working with the mayor at the U.S. Conference of Mayors.
Yeah. I can, oh, I'll wait for my comments. Oh, you want me to address, yep. So, there is a lot of federal action here, and obviously, a divided federal government. Administratively, the administration believes that it can increase the percentage of project-based vouchers from the current 30%, and they are addressing the problem where veterans, the veterans' benefits are counted against them, if you will, for purposes of being able to qualify for permanent supportive housing. They're going to up the, the percentage from 50 to 80%, which they believe will take care of 97% of the unsheltered veterans in the country. So, that's all good news. That's all good news. The question of increased overall funding for more vouchers is obviously caught up in a, in a broader political context in which the Congresswomen Matsui and Bera are not in the majority party currently. So, but I have some other comments about how the process really works that maybe we'll, we'll.
Which, which I want to thank you, Mayor, because, I mean, part of this, this is really rich, but also, the public deserves to read it in a report. That, that lives beyond just being here, and, and so that we see that there is comprehensive knowledge, and we are doing our due diligence, and we are advocating and having those conversations. I just believe that the public also deserves that and not just listening to the council meeting.
Very good. No point well taken. Thank you. Councilmember Valenzuela.
Yeah, I had a related.
I, I'm, I'm, sorry.
It's okay. And done. Anyways.
I have, I have real power here.
I had a related comment, which is that when you look up Housing Choice Vouchers, Sacramento, there's nothing on the webpage about this when you, it says, if you want updates, click on our Facebook or Twitter. I went all the way back through February, saw nothing about this. I think it would really behoove, given the broadness of the impact and the community's interest in this, if we had something at the top of the page that was like, hey, attention, click here for information on recent program updates. And we had just a quick, easy doc that could say, this is coming from HUD, this is the changes that it means, this is what this means for you. Even like, I was going to write up a social post to share this, and I don't know what to link to, because the report is so spare and there's no information online. Like, I don't even know if there's a phone number people should be calling if they're impacted or potentially impacted and want to call to ask questions. So, that could maybe be a follow-up, is like what, I see a phone number if you've applied but don't have a voucher on the website, but I don't see any other phone numbers. And maybe that's something you get once you're a voucher holder, so this is redundant, but I would love to include that, and I'm sure my colleagues would love to try to help elevate, hey, if you have questions, if you're not sure what this means, call us. My other question, though, was really about a letter that I sent to Director Dozier that we got from some service providers, and apologies if this is redundant to the Vice Mayor's questions at all. I was trying to find that information, and so I missed a couple of her questions, so if this is redundant, please excuse me. But we, they were talking a little bit about, A, not blaming anybody at SHRA for not trying their best with obvious HUD changes. I mean, it's a complex program. You're doing what you can. But they did note delays in processing applications, requests, change in income that are sometimes impacting clients, and delays in the inspections, which I believe the Vice Mayor talked a little bit about. But I guess I just wanted to give you all an opportunity to just address that publicly. I know we get some money for admin out of the voucher allocation, and so I guess I was just curious what steps SHRA has been taking to try to streamline that in, because obviously, if you find a landlord who says yes, having it be delayed or having it go too long would really disincentivize a landlord from saying yes, because they want to lease that apartment up as soon as they can, so.
Right. Yes. Good. We have been meeting directly with landlords and landlord associations as well, so on that part. Regarding the streamlining of the process, we are working, we're, we're working just as fast as we can. There are challenges for sure, and I know, I know that we are past the pandemic. We have had a really difficult time during the pandemic, just finding staff who are coming to work, and the, the ramping up to bring in staff and to get staff trained, it is a very complex program, and folks who are new to come on to work with us don't get it per se, don't, our training period is not a week or so. So, continuing to manage that and bring in new staff and continuing to train and bring them on board is something that we're still struggling with post-pandemic. So, and I want to thank Vice Mayor for really mentioning, and it was in my presentation, I didn't say, this is a really difficult time for everybody. We in our heart are housers, and so that's what we do, and we want to, and we're really looking to serve the homeless folks in the community. And this has been really difficult. This is a difficult position for everybody, as you're hearing, in the community as well as our staff, who are really working hard to try and be able to house the folks who need us. So, we're continuing to look at, and we have a motto, work smarter, not harder. So, we're continuing to use technology, and the E-RIFTA was an example. We just redid our website if you're applying for housing assistance or updating your information if you're on the waitlist. So, we're continuing to make inroads and to use technology and to really streamline at those processes where we can. In the end, there's a lot that is federally mandated, is, and it, it doesn't happen quickly.
No, of course, and definitely appreciate that you're operating in a quagmire, but like, what is, like, the average wait time, you would say? So, like, one of the examples in the letter was that someone tried to update their income, and it, SHRA was in the process of verifying that new income, so they didn't pay the voucher, and someone almost got evicted because that just took, the landlord didn't know, hey, I just didn't get my payment this month, I'm going to evict you. So, what is the average delay we're talking about here in terms of admin?
We answered a little bit differently. If we know that there is a situation that is impacting the family's ability to maintain housed, then we will make that a priority, and we will move forward on that quickly. So, to preserve, again, that's what we do. We house and we keep people housed. And so, really working with the family and making sure that there's communication there so that we can respond. If there is a change in, in, in income, that's something that we do all the time. If it's a decrease in income, then we work on it as soon as we can get it verified, and we can go back to the time at which it was, the change happened and it was reported to us. So, then the family doesn't have to pay now based on income that they don't have and they reported last month. We can go back and fix that. But again, it depends on the communication.
No, that makes sense.
And then, if I could just add?
Yeah, sure.
In terms of also working with our landlords, we actually have a full-time person who is our landlord liaison. So, if a landlord is having any difficulty in terms of payment or getting information, that person's main job is to intervene and to kind of cut through the system and get it resolved for them. He, he does an outstanding job, and so that is another thing that we also market and talk to our landlords about, is reaching out to the landlord liaison so that if there's a problem, especially if it comes down to payments that could impact their ability to stay housed, then that goes to the top of the list and gets, gets done immediately, because that's, that's what we're there, is to keep people in housing. So, that's worked out very well. In fact, we have two landlord liaisons now that I think about it.
No, that's great. Yeah, I think I would love to, I would love to see both of those things on the website, and maybe that's a good to do. I mean, because I know, I would love to be putting out, hey, if you're interested in this, you're a landlord. I have several landlords in my district who are saying it's getting harder to fill units. I don't think they know what the new income levels are that the vouchers cover. They're quite generous, and I think we could maybe get some folks in if they were like, oh, good, I have somebody I know I can call who's available and dedicated. So, this would all be great information to put on the website and send to us so that we can help publicize. But in general, when it comes to like the inspections, I wonder if there's just efficiencies that we could get that would be, like, for instance, if our co-team is doing a rental housing inspection on that property, do we also need to go back again within a certain amount of time to confirm that what's happening is happening, right? Like, if there's a larger landlord, say they have more than 10 units on their property, can we go out and just do periodic, like, inspections of the property and say, hey, if you rent here, it's cool, right? Like, are there things that we could be looking at that Meatheads requirements to the degree possible, where it's like, maybe the renters are given a checklist, and then it's like, hey, we inspected this property a month ago, but if any of these things are missing, call us, right? So that there's just, it takes out some of that redundancy and maybe makes it a little bit easier. I don't know if any of this is possible within HUD, but that's definitely something I've heard loud and clear from the service providers and would love to see us address. But in general, yes, update the website and send us the link so we can help get the word out, because I think there's a lot of important work happening that would be good to advertise.
Good. Thank you.
Mayor Protim.
Thanks, Mayor. I agree with my colleague, Councilmember Kaplan, on it being a two-page document on our staff report, but the information that you're presenting today is worrisome and honestly, really hard for the city of Sacramento, for the residents and the people that are going to be impacted. And here on this dais, we talk a lot about prevention, and this is one of those prevention methods of making sure that families don't end up homeless. And this is something that I think we need to highlight and just inform the community a lot more on, because it's going to have a devastating impact in Sacramento. And so, I guess my direction would be to LaShaw and to SHRA to work with Tim in our Communications Department here at the city so that we can do some kind of media on this, because people need to know that, hey, this is the direction we're going in, we're being guided by the federal government, this is how maybe people want to help. Maybe they want to send letters of support. Maybe they want to lobby our representatives. I mean, obviously, I'm sure that they, they, they want help, and the mayor was out in Washington, D.C., also lobbying for more housing, but this is something that I think residents can get involved, and we need to work together on this to, you know, really support you in the long run.
Thank you. Couple of questions myself. I, I want to, and I know I walked in a little bit late. I apologize for that. Is the reason for the final notice to the voucher holders because we don't have the money from the federal government, or is it because we believe that some of the voucher holders are not trying hard enough to find housing?
No. It's a budget-based decision. So, when HUD contacted us in February, the concern was whether we have sufficient funds, again, remembering we don't have a budget at this point, but we're, we're trying to keep as many people housed as we can. So, those folks who are already housed with a voucher, we're trying to keep the funding there. So, if that's the concern, then we don't want to continue to bring in new folks. That's, that is the concern.
So, isn't it true that there's a little bit of a game that happens between the local housing agencies, not only in Sacramento but throughout California and the country, and HUD where, when there is this sort of discrepancy that there's a true-up sometime in the fall where the money is provided by the federal government to make sure that people who have vouchers are not losing them, and certainly, people who are housed with vouchers are not losing their housing?
So, so the funds continue to be distributed throughout the year, but not in a way that can be anticipated, because what they're redistributing are funds that other jurisdictions are not able to utilize.
Understood.
And so, HUD continues to take back those funds and to distribute to agencies like ours that are using all of the funding that is available.
So, let's just take over the last 10 years. How many times have we been in shortfall and have, have we been able How many times have we been in shortfall and have, have we been able to gain some of the resources from the other jurisdictions that have been, that have underutilized their vouchers?
There's been one time in the history where, and it was during sequestration, which really hit everybody, where we were in a similar situation where we were looking to really bring in all of our resources to continue to help those folks who were currently housed to remain housed. Otherwise, on a regular year, we're spending, typically, we're spending all of what HUD is giving us, and we're pulling additional out of reserves so that we can continue to maximize.
Is this the first time we've been in so-called shortfall?
Outside of sequestration?
Outside of sequestration.
I believe so. It's the first in my experience, yes.
So for other jurisdictions that you know of in California, when they have been in shortfall, have they benefited from the redistribution of, of funds from other jurisdictions who underutilized their vouchers?
Yes, but, and the but is that that doesn't necessarily get them out of shortfall. So there are agencies who are in shortfall and have been for many years, for several years. So they continue to struggle to keep those families that are housed, housed. Again, as costs go up, that may mean that you're not able to bring in additional families because the cost of housing that group of folks, and I shouldn't say, I shouldn't say it that way, but to continue to house families that are currently housed, the cost of that continues to go up.
But what I'm, what I'm trying to assess here, and I think my colleagues are trying to assess, and this is where the data and the, the reporting, you know, obviously would be helpful to continue the conversation, but it's a question of how great a risk are we at? I mean, we have a friendly administration, and, and it's hard to believe that they would take vouchers away from people who are using them and are housed. And it's also hard, hard to imagine that there wouldn't be some discussion about taking vouchers back in, in, in some way. When there is this true-up provision that you just described where for jurisdictions that are underutilizing, there's a way to make up the difference?
Yeah, I don't know that it's necessarily making up the difference. It's, it's a way to bring additional funding, but not necessarily truing up, not necessarily funding that gap. But I think the challenge is, and I would feel, I would feel better answering your question if we were the only housing authority that was experiencing shortfall right now. But we know that we are not. We know that this is predominantly a California issue, but Houston, Texas has been in the news for being in exactly the same situation. And other housing authorities throughout the country are as well. So it's because of, because we're not in, in this alone, I'm not as confident to say that there are funding to true us up.
Thank you for that answer. So then it then gets to the second half of this. Okay, there's some risk. And as you say, it's a broader problem than just Sacramento. But are we using a one-size-fits-all approach for the voucher holders that have not yet been able to utilize them? And here's what I mean by that. If there are people, for example, let's break it down. Let's talk about the unsheltered population for a moment. How many people in Sacramento County who are unsheltered have vouchers? Let's say within the city. How many unsheltered people in the city have vouchers?
So I know that when we started this in March, we had about 700 families that we were not paying a subsidy on, and that's all I know. So they may, some of these are folks who had vouchers who were moving from one unit to another. And we know that there was not a subsidy during that. Some of them may have been unsheltered, some may be sleeping and, or, or couch surfing, sleeping wherever they can find a friend. And some of those may be homeless who are in shelters as well, so.
And we have no means to, to match the unsheltered voucher holders?
Yes, if you recall, Mary Liz, when we were going through the 700 or some odd, we were able to take a look at how many were people who were moving. So if you take the people who are moving, which at any given time is somewhere around 400 people. That's just normal.
Okay.
Anytime, at any given time, there's anywhere from 400 to 500 people who are moving from one unit to another. And sometimes in that move, they may move and there's a gap, you know? There may be a gap of a few months before they move into a new unit. So once we had subtracted that number out, then we were looking at how many, you know, were based on referrals. And I believe as a part of that analysis, if you recall, it was somewhere around 175 people that we identified were people who had a voucher, what we call a voucher on the street. In other words, they had a voucher that they could use to lease up, and they were currently homeless.
Let's just focus, that's where I want to focus. Now, look, I would like people to be able to utilize vouchers to move from one unit to another. But under Maslow's hierarchy, that may be less, well, it's less compelling, especially given the risk and the challenges that you've talked about here today than 175 people who are out on the streets. Giving them a letter telling them they have one last chance to use the voucher seems, seems inconsistent, or at least doesn't acknowledge the fact that they're not, they can't find housing on the end or even shelter under any circumstance because of our shelter waiting lists and because. So what are we doing between SHRA, the city, the county, Sacramento Steps Forward, to identify those 175 people, not give them a last chance letter, and actually urgently try to work with the private sector, the apartment association, our public housing resources, and try to get those people in housing? Because they have a ticket. They have a golden ticket, which maybe isn't as golden as it, as it, as it seems, but it is a ticket where, where the federal government is willing to pay a significant portion of the rent. What are we doing to organize ourselves around the 175 people?
Yeah, we're working with our community partners, and we've had meetings with them so that that is, that is who is interfacing, interacting with the folks. You are right, we, we don't have a way to reach them consistently. We do ask people to give us a mailing address, that's how we normally communicate, but we also communicate through email, and we did that as well. Outside of those two ways, plus our partners.
Let me, let me, let me just be blunt about this. This isn't only on SHRA's shoulders here. This is all of us, okay? But you're part of it, and you administer the voucher program. There needs to be an all-hands-on-deck conversation with Lisa Bates at Steps Forward, the county of Sacramento. We've got 175 people out there that have vouchers. Why isn't that a priority? It, it must be a priority. And we, and we, this is one where we cannot be siloed, right? So you're responsible for this. Well, Steps Forward is administering the HMIS system. And the county, of course, is providing the services, and the city is navigating people to the shelters and to our 1,350 beds that we have and trying to assess how many we have every single night. This is, this is, this is where we can prove concept here. It's hard enough to get people off the streets without a, a golden ticket. When people have the ticket, that's 175 people. I mean, so what, what do we need to do to, to enhance the, the collaboration among all responsible agencies with regard to this particular cohort of people? Because the rest of it, you give the last chance letter, the people are housed, okay, well, at least they're housed. And you're balancing that with the risk of losing the vouchers with the federal government. The 175, giving them a letter seems kind of cruel because they're, they're out on the streets.
Well, I, if I could.
Please.
Just.
Please.
So, you know, one of the things, it's not just giving them a letter, is a part of these conversations that we're having are directly with those clients. And so we're able to reach out to them, and those are the clients who are part of the 175 who have attended these webinars and meetings. And then we'll have office hours with them. They have specific questions that are unique to their particular situation, where we do provide them information, we provide them, you know, different resources that they can use. We also are in conversation, been working with the county, with Sacramento Steps Forward, and really reaching out to the service providers. The service providers are their point of contact with, because they're connecting them to all of the services that are available and assisting them with locating housing, trying to make sure that it's the right and appropriate housing in the neighborhoods that they really want to be in. So it has been a collaborative effort, and we have been working, and we are seeing an uptick in the number of RIFTAs that we are receiving.
What are RIFKs?
Oh, sorry. The Request for Tennessee Approval, which is Mary Liz was talking about earlier, is kind of that marriage document that says, I've located a unit and I have a landlord who's ready to rent to me. So we are seeing a huge increase in the number of people who are locating housing and are actually moving in. So I think we're working really, really hard. There's a lot of dynamics that are going here. And while I do, I appreciate what everyone is saying in terms of, you know, additional transparency, but a lot of our effort has been working directly with those service providers, having multiple meetings, multiple webinars, having direct conversations and meeting with the clients as well. And we do need to do more in terms of outreach and putting things on our website and making sure everyone can access that. But we really have been trying to focus on how do we get to the client and really give them information and connections?
Like I say, and I, again, I want to, I mean, this is the Housing Authority meeting. I'm not putting it all on the one agency, but it is frustrating because I, I don't necessarily believe that there is the maximum amount of collaboration between everybody responsible for this problem. I don't. And it plagues us, of course, when it comes to the, the larger problem of homelessness. We've had long and many years of conversations with our county partners. It's now a better, there's a foundation at least, but I still have issues with the pace at which people are being enrolled in full-service partnerships, as you've heard many times, and the wrap, the wraparound service model. And so we, we have systemic, we, we are too siloed. We are too siloed here. And until, you know, we, and, and this is an outcome-based business, the measurement ought to be whether or not these 170, and I know it's an estimate, and I appreciate the fact that the pace is increasing and improving, and there's more RIFKs, if that's what it's called, more, more. But I want to see some, this is the transparency part. We don't need data for data's sake, but I'd like to see a drive towards housing those 175 people that have a golden ticket. And to measure that on a regular basis, and not just assume that there's maximum amounts of collabor, maximum levels of collaboration because it's, it's, where are those people? And it's not your job necessarily, again, to always find them. It's where, this is, these are the providers. This is DCR. This is county mental health. This is Sacramento Steps Forward. They're supposed to be our systems, our systems JPA here. Outcomes, I want the 170, I want the 175 people housed, please. Don't we all? Not, not just, and, and so I, I'd like to, I don't know. This is an eight-year conversation. And we've made great strides and progress, and we're doing, we're doing more than ever before, in some ways better than ever before. But we shouldn't be satisfied as long as those people are out on the streets.
Agreed.
Okay? So can we, is it, is it a convening? I'd like to have Lisa Bates in the same room as, as, as Ms. Paulson, and Brian Pedro and the county folks. And I'd like to, I'd like to focus on who these people are. I'd like to know who they are by name and where they are, and do we have geographical coordinates of where they are? And finally, I assume that if we're able to get them housed, that that lowers the risk then, that the federal government is somehow going to claw, is somehow going to claw back those vouchers where once homeless people were actually, have actually found housing. Does that, does that reduce our risk?
No.
Oh, come on.
It's all about dollars.
They are not, they are not going to kick people out of housing. They're not doing it. I'm sorry, I'm, I'm passionate. Go ahead, Paulson.
No, no, I, I agree with you. That's worst-case scenario. That's what we're trying to prevent.
Let me tell you, the old thing about asking for forgiveness rather than permission? Get those people housed, and then we'll ask for forgiveness.
Yes.
Don't leave them out there, and then the vouchers go, and then you have a lesser, then you have a lesser chance of actually housing them.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm done. Thank you.
I don't want to lose anybody who's.
Vice Mayor? Yep, thank you.
Really sorry, I was trying my hardest not to punch up again because I didn't want to.
Oh, no, sorry.
A great, a great summation, but I did have a question that popped up into my head as listening to you speak, Mayor. So again, knowing the 175 is a generic number, it could be, it could be any other number once you go through the data. But once we figure out what that is, or to the best of our ability, knowing that there are a lot of complications when folks are living on the streets and may not be as connected, is there a way that we can, we, the city, like our Department of Community Response and, and Homeless Services can connect with, with SHRA to get some of those names and be able to actually connect with those people? Because I feel like that's where one of the disconnection points is, you know, we've heard, we help connect people to the right services and shelter, and, and we oftentimes have that point where we are talking to that person, maybe multiple times a week, and just so that we can have that connection point. So is that possible to share, share the names?
Let me say first that most of the folks who have come in who are homeless, we asked during the process, is there a third party that we can contact? Often, it's a community service provider, sometimes it's a parent, sometimes it's a caseworker. We keep that record as well. So when we notify all of the folks that we're talking about, about the last and final voucher extension, we are notifying not only them, but the person or the entity or the agency that they have identified as well. And so most of the folks that we're talking about have come into our organization with a service provider who is involved, and that's who they have an ongoing relationship with. That's our, that's our assumption, that's our, why we're working with them, and that's how they've come into us.
Okay. Well, okay, so my, my, so Department of Community Response, for, for example, is not necessarily, it's not necessarily a service provider, it's a service connector, right? So we're not, we're not actually producing a lot of the services ourself, though we do have like city-run shelters, for example. But yeah, I guess, I guess I understand that there are other providers that might be there, but is it possible also for DCR to get that information so that they can help reconnect or connect people to the right service, especially in the interim? Like, if housing's not an option for folks, or if they're not able to find the right, how can we make sure that they can get connected to the right other thing? So yeah, I guess my question is, is can DCR get that information?
So I'm going to punt to our legal advocate or legal representation.
Brad Nacano, SHRA General Counsel. So SHRA, the Housing Choice Voucher Program, as you know, it's a federally funded program. And as a result of that, it is subject to the federal privacy laws. And those laws explicitly prohibit any kind of disclosure of information that could identify a participant, except in about 10 enumerated categories in which unfortunately this situation does not fall within. So unless the participant provides what is known as a release, something that they sign that says, this specific party or parties are allowed to have my information, we, as the housing authority, are prohibited from sharing that identifiable information with any party other than those on this enumerated list within the federal privacy app.
Okay. So would it be possible then, you know, moving forward at least, for, to have that be one of the, the questions that's asked in the process of, do you feel comfortable sharing your information with either the city or the county? Just given that they have, you know, obviously, we combined have the ability to connect people to other resources?
Or the reverse of that. As DCR is interacting with folks on the street, if they have a voucher, then while they're talking to them, if they can get a release signed so that we can communicate and partner together with that, that would be outstanding.
Okay, great, thank you. That's all my questions.
Well, Brian Pedro's sitting out there. I think the city, I think all the entities need to prepare standard releases and have them in their back pockets so that those releases can be produced in those conversations, they can be signed on the spot. And then this problem, which by the way, this is one I'd love to take up with, I know it may be statutory, but it's one we ought to take up with HUD as well, because it's ridiculous. ridiculous, the fact that one government agency cannot communicate with another government agency to try to help somebody. That's not what the privacy laws are intended to, are intended to guard against. And so what I would appreciate would be maybe the draft of a letter that I could send to important people in Washington, DC, and really try to stir this one up a little bit, because it's a, it's a flaw in the law. It really is. It's a flaw. Should be fixed. Please? Thank you. All right. That's it. Thank you so much, Ms. Paulson. Thank you. I think that concludes our agenda. Do we have...
Two.
We have two speakers, I apologize. Go right ahead.
I have two speakers for matters not on the agenda. The first is Michael Welton, then Kai On.
Hello.
I'd like to bring this up. I was selected for Section 8 housing, and because I'm homeless and had no address to send my mail to, they took me off the list. And I think thousands of people that are homeless are going through the same thing in these streets. I was selected, and just because I didn't turn in my paperwork on time, didn't get my paperwork, didn't know it was coming, so then they said, "Okay, well, go to a shelter." So now I'm staying in a shelter, and the Section 8 list is closed all the way, and they, they told me that they're not going to put me on the list at all because the, because the list is closed all the way. And I just heard it's not going to open to 2025 now. So it's 100,000 people, or however many homeless people out here in the streets that are homeless for real, don't have no address, they don't, SHRA don't go back and, they don't hold your spot for you. I mean, once you find out that you got it, you know, it's too late. You try to sign back up. Then I've been on the waiting list since 2018 for county, city, public, and then I got selected for a project-based housing, and, but I never, never, never got to move in or never got a chance to get it. I went to appeal it. I went to the county and showed them that I was homeless, that I was getting EBT homeless, that child support, never had a place to send my check to because I was homeless, and the county never, they never, they never put me on. I've been homeless, I'm in a shelter with a whole bunch of homeless people. I don't know what to do.
Can we have somebody talk to the gentleman, please? Thank you, Ms. Paulson, if you would talk to the gentleman.
I think that rule needs to be changed.
We could see if we could be of help here. I mean, it's maybe illustrative of part of what we're...
Yeah, that's, got thousands of people homeless right now. If you're, if you're homeless and you don't have an address, you get, you get selected, you can't go back, and they're going to deny you when you try to, to try to get your voucher again, and I was denied. And no reason, no, not because probation, I'm not, I don't know nothing. I go to school, I go to, I got a job, I'm just homeless because I got a divorce, and I've been homeless since my divorce.
Thank you. Right there, Ms. Paulson.
Kai?
Gotten mayor and all the council member. Last August...
Please proceed, the technology is working on it.
Go ahead.
Please proceed.
Can I reset the call?
Please proceed.
Okay. Last August, SPD already tell me that...
This is the Housing Authority meeting. This is not, not probably the right venue to bring up what you brought up numerous times before the City Council about the, the death of your, of your loved one in SPD's report. This is the Housing Authority meeting.
But it has been alignment, it has not been resolved.
I know.
Even maybe they provide me fake information.
I know.
I request a report, to give me a report that is from CHP, and say it's highway-related. My father was walking on South Side Park, it's not on a highway. Why is CHP? And also, why Captain Kinley still email me if SPD already say this report is not related to my father? And also on the conclusion, this is 26 pages of report and SPD. My father's name not on any of that 26 pages. Even on the conclusion of the report, they didn't put my father's name on the conclusion, just used victim possession. So people want me to guess who is...
Thank you for your comments, but your time is complete.
Okay, thank you. I think I understand you want your father's, your late father's name reflected in the report as his full name, correct?
Sorry?
You want your father's, your late father's full name reflected in the, in the official report?
The drivers kill my father's name, and my father's name will be in...
In the report?
In the same statement, say, June So-Fong killed my father.
We'll talk to the police department again, but I don't know what we can do here. I know you've talked to the police department about this many times, and I don't know that we can do anything to help you here. I just don't know.
I also submit to OPSA.
I'll talk to the police department about the name issue, okay?
I have a letter for you and all the council members.
Okay, why don't you leave that with the clerk, and I will take that letter myself because I want to, I will look at this, okay? Thank you. Is there anything further to come before the Housing Authority Board? Okay, if not, we will recon, we have closed session at 4:00, and then full council at 5:00. Word, Jordan.